I'd like to call this meeting to orders. Oh. Thank you. Please stand for closing.
This is the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, state for the adequate notice. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. We will from May 2016, notice that the home distribution, star ledger, local source and the clerk of the meeting is valid. By state order, a notice from the committee that is working on any time. In addition to the listed items in this event, this board may change and discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein, as is the law at the regularly scheduled monthly coordinating under the sunshine law. Roll call. Mrs. Viviana?
President.
Mrs. Birch?
Here.
Mrs. Slater?
Here.
Mr. Colobus?
Here.
Mr. Tapalaski?
Here.
Mrs. Bellani?
Here.
Mr. Alvarez?
Here.
Mrs. Soodak?
Yeah, here. Pro fewer minutes for the committee of the whole held at the board retreat held on April 18, 2016, and the public hearing and regular meeting held on April 25, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
And then second. Roll call. Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Colobus?
Yes.
Mr. Tapalaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Soodak?
Yes.
Mrs. Soodak, can I point of personal privilege, just some of you may be noticing that there's someone else sitting at the head of the table. For those of you who are not aware, Mr. Russell resigned effective the 13th, I believe.
Yeah.
And on Thursday, was it Thursday?
Yeah.
What?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. On Wednesday, Mrs. Soodak took over as board president and Mrs. Viviana was elected as vice president. So I would like to congratulate them both and wish them the luck.
Comments from the public? Would you have the items on? See enough.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening. First, I'd like to begin with our monthly harassment intimidation bullying report. It was good news. This month, we had 12 incidents reported. Four of those were validated as gang H.I.B. incidents. Four were not and four were undetermined. The consequences included out of school suspension, detention, loss of recess and monitoring, and the alleged influence in all instances of the council. I'd like to publicly acknowledge Monica Gonzalez, teacher at Linden High School, who was recently named the unique county teacher of the year. Because of the short notice, Monica couldn't be here tonight, but we're going to recognize her at the June board meeting. This is really a tremendous honor and accomplishment. It brings great pride to our district to have someone we know as a great teacher be recognized at a higher level. So Monica is now the unique county teacher of the year, and she'll have an opportunity to compete against the other county finalists, who would be titled a state teacher of the year, which we're all rooting for. So we wish her the best of luck. Tomorrow night, I'd like to remind everyone that we have our all-city music and art festival at the promenade of Wood Avenue. Knock on the wood, the weather's looking good. And as many of you know, Linden was recently named as one of the top 100 communities for music education in the entire country. So you'll see some of our students' work and talent on display tomorrow night at the promenade. It will include the elementary band, the middle school and high school orchestra, the choir, and the touring troupe. And it begins at 7:00 P.M. So hope you all come in. Thursday night, we have our senior prom. So I want to wish all of our seniors a happy and safe night. They lucked into a four-day weekend this year, so there's no senior cut day anymore. Speaking of that, the end of the school year is fast approaching. Last day of school for students is June 23rd, with the exception of Linden High School, which is June 24th. They have to make up one extra day because of the evacuation we had. Our high school graduation ceremony will be held on June 24th at 10:00 a.m. at Tiger Stadium, as we have for the past several years. We hold the event at 10:00 a.m., and if there is inclement weather in the morning, we can move it to 1:00. If there is still inclement weather at 1:00, we'll move the graduation ceremony indoors to the high school at 6:00 P.M. And on June 7th, I'd also like to mention that it's our local scholarship award that I live in high school. And it's an event that if you haven't been, you should really try to attend. There are a number of local businesses, organizations, private citizens who donate thousands of dollars for our high school seniors who are attending college and trade programs. And it's really nice to see our community come together for our kids and help support them as they eventually off into the collegiate world. I was going to say the real world, but college is another real world, okay? Madam President, that concludes my report tonight. I think we may need to go to executive session later on one item on the agenda on the attorney report. Well, on the sidebar, negotiations. Okay, I don't know. Well, I could explain to the board that we have to get some more information before we go into executive, because it was not on the agenda for our committee of the whole because we just received it yesterday and glossed over this. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Robotosi.
Well, can I explain the paper? Yeah, there's nothing to compare. So we negotiated a four-year contract with the Linden Education Association, or the second year of that four-year contract. However, when the contract was negotiated, the bus driver's salary was not negotiated. The person who had been doing that job had been doing that job for 40 years, and I guess nobody was anticipating that he was going to retire. He was on an off-guide step while he's retiring, and now we want to hire somebody, so we, in conjunction with the L.A.A., we negotiated the sidebar to give an increase, a very small increase, to the bus driver's salary guide for each step. I think it comes down to 1.7 percent, 1.2 percent, I guess. Do you remember what I said there? For the current here. Somewhere around 1.2 percent. I'll get you that exact number. Is that in the back? Is that in there? So why don't we vote on items 1 through 4, and then we can vote on 5 separately? That's okay.
The attorney committee on recommendation of the superintendent of schools presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Motion number one is to modify a previous H.I.B. finding. Motion 2 through 4 are to deny the previous.
So moved.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Colobus?
Yes.
Mr. Tapalaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Soodak?
Yes.
If I can, I have it now, Mr. Tapalaski. The increase for next year is 1.37 percent, for the following year is 1.14 percent, and for the last year is 2.2 percent. 2.12. So I'd like to move item 5 on the attorney's report.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Colobus?
Yes.
Mr. Tapalaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Soodak?
Yes.
Curriculum and instructions. Thank you, Madam President. The curriculum and instruction committee, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the assistant superintendent, present the following 37 motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Items 1 through 8 deal with the approval of specialized programs for the placement of classified students, determination of out-of-district placements, the approval of payment for related services as per the child study team evaluations, the transportation of students, the approval and termination of home instruction services, and the approval of students to attend the extended school year program at Morris Union Joint Church Commission Developmental and Learning Center. Items 9 and 10 approve the enrollment of a student on a tuition basis from the state of New Jersey and the enrollment of a student in an alternate district with paid tuition. Item 11 amends board action on past CNI reports. Item 12 adopts curriculum. Item 13 grants permission for use of facilities and school activities. Item 14 approves district field trips. 15, 16, and 17 approve training for district staff. 18 approves professional development activities. 19 approves the online courses and summer school options for credit recovery and new course credit. 20 approves the relocation of the Linden High School alternative and top programs. 21 approves the revised middle school schedule beginning for 2016-17 school year. 22 grants approval to establish the big read, a summer reading, for Linden High School. 23 and 24 approve agreements with Rutgers University School of Social Work and Montclair State University Department of Psychology for students intern to conduct field work. 25 grants approval for Linden High School students and the introduction to education class to participate in internship experiences with district elementary schools and McManus Middle School. 26 and 27 grant approval for teachers and students from Spain and Italy to visit Linden High School in the spring of 2017. 28 authorizes a cooperative partnership between Linden High School and Cheyman Foreign Language School in Cheyman, China. 29 grants approval for I.B. Italian students to participate in work sessions with teachers from Italy in July 2016. 30 and 31 grants approval to provide title ID services to students at the Union County Youth Detention Center and to submit the title ID program plan to NJBOE. Item 2 recognizes and congratulates two Linden High School students for the highest academic ranking in their class. 33 through 36 approve time schedules and bell schedules for 2016-17 school year. And item 37 approve superintendent's determination actions that get taken for all reported incidences of harassment, intimidation, and bullying discussed at the April 25, 2016 regular meeting. Madam President, I'm looking for the curriculum and instruction. Items 1 through 37, I would respectfully ask for second. Any discussion? Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Slater?
Yes.
Mrs. Soodak?
Yes.
Mr. Colobus?
Yes.
Mr. Tapalaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Soodak?
Yes.
Management operations, Colobus?
Yes. The management operations committee, upon the recommendation superintendent of schools, presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. The first one is, perhaps Dr. Robotosi would like to comment about these, as that's one of our former employees.
Hi, Mr. Colobus. Helen Paco worked for the Linden Board of Education for 25 years as secretary in the maintenance department, as well as for various schools. She retired in 1995. Mr. Colobus, there also is another agenda item at the end, that was Evanson Bill Martin.
Right, right.
Bill Martin worked for the Linden Board of Education for 36 years. Began his career as a physical education educator and drove as ed teacher in 1955. I'd like to offer our deepest condolences on behalf of the entire district and our most heartfelt sympathies to all of you.
The fall retirements be accepted with regret. Aline Cattarett, Anne Guel, and Linda Williams. Dr. Robotosi?
Thank you, Mr. Colobus. Ms. Cattarett came to work at Linden High School shortly after the terror attacks on September 11, 2001. She worked in New York City, and that event is what spurred her to become a teacher. And she was a wonderful teacher at Linden High School for 14 years as a speech and drama teacher. She will be missed. Anne Guel has worked for the Board of Education for 12 years as a resource teacher at Saul Middle School. And Linda Williams has worked for the Board of Education for 11 years. And Linda's been a math teacher and most recently as a math coach. So we want to wish all of those employees a happy, healthy retirement. Congratulations.
And whereas the above employees retiring from the active service in the public schools of Linden after the number of years listed, and whereas it is desire of the members of the Board of Education of the city of Linden to express their appreciation for their loyal and unselfish service during these years, therefore be resolved that the gratitude and best wishes to the members of the Board of Education of the city of Linden, and hereby be tendered to the employee an acknowledgment of the service sheet, so faithfully and conscientiously rendered, and be further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread on the minutes of the Board of Education. All right? Number three, amend board action on past management operations reports as listed. Four, resignation for the following staff. Five, appoint the following staff for the 2016-2017 school year. Number six, leave of absence. Number seven, be resolved that the Linden Board of Education has determined that one quantitative goal, copies in the hands of board members, established for the 2015-2016 school year for Danny A. Robotosi, E.D., chief school administrator, has been satisfied to date, and be further resolved that the business administrator, board secretary, shall forward a certified copy of this resolution to the Union County Superintendent of Schools, and be further resolved that upon receipt of confirmation of satisfaction of the above goal from the Union County Superintendent of Schools, the applicable merit bonus provisions of the superintendent's contract shall be paid. And I could just further comment here, saying that Dr. Robotosi did an outstanding job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colobus.
All right. Number eight, approve the transfers of the following staff for the 2016-2017 school year, effective on September 1st, as listed. Number nine, approve the following reassignment within building for the 2016-2017 school year. Number 10, appoint the following staff for curriculum writing at the contractual rate. 11, appoint the following staff for park scoring appeals during the 2015-2016 school year. 12, appoint the following staff to process the district's 2016 summer printing order. 13, appoint the following students to work at part-time in support of the 2016 summer printing. 14, appoint the following district speech therapist to perform speech and language evaluations. 15, appoint the following district speech therapist to be paid $27 an hour for participation in the E-Rate Vow. 16, appoint the following teacher to translate Spanish. 17, appoint the following teachers to be paid contractual rate of $27 an hour for their participation in initial reevaluation planning, eligibility, and annual IEP meetings that will begin in July. 18, appoint the following staff for summer work from July 1st to August 31st for mathematics, curriculum realignment, and professional development. 19, appoint the following staff for the summer 2016 extended school year remedial reading. 20, appoint the following staff for the summer 2013 extended school year. 21, approve additional summer work from June 27th to August 4th for the following social worker. 22, appoint the following staff as a substitute teacher for the summer 2016 extended school year. 23, appoint the following staff for the 2016-2017 school year to work with Linden Public School aftercare program at the contractual rate. What did you name it there? 24, appoint the following staff as substitutes for the aftercare program at the rate of $25 an hour. 25, reappoint the following part-time power professionals the 2016-2017 school year. 26, reappoint the following part-time power professionals for the upcoming school year. 27, reappoint the following part-time school aides for the upcoming school year. There's a lot of them, too. 28, appoint all part-time school aides as part-time school aide substitutes for the upcoming school year. 29, appoint staff listed to support the EMAP program at Linden High School. 30, reappoint the following department chairs for the upcoming year. 31, appoint the following staff for the Title III ESL Summer Tutorial Program. 32, appoint the following home instructors at the contractual rate. 33, grant permission for the following positions to implement physical examinations of students for athletic programs for the upcoming school year. 34, approve the following school nurses as medical bus aides for the upcoming school year. 35, appoint the following medical bus aides for the upcoming school year. 36, appoint the following staff to work athletic security detail at their assigned locations for various events throughout the upcoming school year. And 37, appoint the following staff to work as athletic ticket sales for various events as well. 37, or I should say 38, virtue actively appoint the following coach for spring sports 2016. 39, appoint the following staff at the 2016-2017 Interscholastic Intramural Athletic Program at the high school and middle school. 40, appoint the following staff for the upcoming school year for interscholastic intramural athletic programs at the high school and middle school. 41, appoint the following volunteer football coaches. 42, appoint the following part-time volunteer for the upcoming year. 43, appoint the following staff as professional development presenters for science workshops throughout the school year for a total of 175 hours at the contractual rate. 44, approve the support services of 15 12th-grade homeroom teachers and 15 security personnel. 45, appoint Jacqueline Del Gracio as the interim student activities account manager for Linden High School. 46, authorize the collection, donation of sick days to stated employee. 47, authorize the collection of stated employee. 48, whereas the superintendent of schools has recommended that the employment and adjustment increments for stated employee whose name is on record, superintendent of schools will be withheld for the school year 2016-2017. 49, compensate the studio staff holding boil license for the upcoming school year. 50, approve the following job description, director of alternative programs. 51, appoint the following substitutes for the upcoming school year. And 52, we mentioned this before, I knew Bill Martin very well. I worked with him for a number of years, probably a good 20 years. He was an outstanding teacher and a great guy, and when I found out this, it kind of broke my heart. He was a good man, good Linden person. So I would just like to comment that he loves Linden. That's all I have. And may I ask for a...
Who's that?
Okay, thank you.
Roll call. Any discussion for us? Roll call. Mrs. Viviana?
Yes. Oh, I stayed on number 13.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes, I'm on number 19, staying for number five.
Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Colobus?
Yes.
Mr. Tapalaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Soodak?
Yes.
Support operations, Mr. Tapalaski?
The support operations committee on recommendation superintendent of schools and business administrator, board secretary, present the following 64 motions in finance and seven of facilities for board approval. Items 1 through 6 are regular board business dealing with acceptance of business administrator board secretary certifications as of April 30, 2016. No line item accounts exceed the amount appropriate or over expended. Board secretary's report for the month of April 2016 authorization payments for salaries and supplemental payroll for May 2016. Draw warrants in amounts specified in paper purses named and a list of transfers and adjustments for the month of April 2016. Item 7 is treasurer's report for the month of April 2016. Item A is student activities report for Linden High School for the month of April. Item 9 is to amend board actions from passage and items 16 in March and items 35 in April in the finance section of the board minutes. Items 10 through 22 are to accept funds in the amount of $425,000 for the 21st Century Community Center grant funds, reflecting funds reflecting COVID communications rebate through the E-Rate program for different items that are being paid for through the rebates. Or is that, that's a different one? Stand back. E-Rate program for a period of 21 through December 31, 2015. $172,734 from New Jersey Department of Education for Title 1D. Money from the employees of Federal 66 Bayway Refinery. $2,000 from the Linden High School PTA in support of Linden Public Schools athletics. $1,000 from California County Council, the San Marco, California, for the 2016 Thomas R. Brown grant ordered to build Mastriano hit coach Linden High School baseball team. $1,000 from care station management in support of Linden Public Schools athletics. Money for the Danny A. Robotosi Ed Scholarship Fund and ads for that program for that dinner that will be held. Super tennis scholarship fund for fundraising dinner. $600 from Copydagger, a charity foundation, School 6. Leader in Me Program, 9476 from Ohio File Prints. Representative Benish Royalty Apparel and money from Target Take Charge of Education Program. Items 23 to 28 approve the purchase of a 2016 Ford 150 truck from Cherry Hill. Win or for assist a contract in the amount of $31,900 to be paid for with FEMA funds based on Jonas winter storm of 2016. Purchase of network equipment through the district not to exceed $170,000. Payment in the amount, that's being funded by the E-Rate money. Payment in the amount of $9,017 to environmental remediation and management fair one for the A.H.E.R.A. Triennial District-wide Reinspection. Payment amount of $1,025 for the remediation to the same company for remediation in Linden Girls Locker Room. A contract for one year in the amount of $10,000 with environmental remediation management in Trenton for rate no services for the 2016-17 school year. Contract with Interstate Waste Management, basing... Contract with Interstate Waste Management, Bestin Bridge, year two of three, in the amount of $786 per month per site for garbage and $9,436 annually for recyclable trash disposal based on low budget received there open on May 13th for all 16 sites. Items 29 to 33 is to enter an agreement with Union County Ed Services Commission and Linden Board to transport special ed non-public students for added replacements. Administer Non-Patriotic Schools Individual Sustainability Act, B Initiative, IDAV with basic funds, professional services with Union County Ed Services for providing professional services with child study team to perform various functions, including by non-leaving to conducting initial evaluations and reevaluations, and also for the purchase of textbooks. Item 34 is renewal of contract with Pomacei Rianza for architect roofing consultants. Professional architect roofing services at the rate of $125 an hour not to exceed $200,000. Items 35 through 40 approve reappearance of Energy America Roseland for the amount of $76,700, $6,396 per month for professional engineering facilities managing program services for the period from July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2017. Renewal of contracts with various vendors. This is the time of year where we have to renew all of our things because the, our election runs contrary to the fiscal year of the school boards, so we renew all contracts with various groups. Forty-one is to approve following resolutions to allow the band parents to operate the Linden High School Band Parents Club, which wishes to assume the responsibility for operating the stand, refreshment stands. Renew food service management with Pontomian Services for administration and management costs since year four or five years. Forty-three is approve the following resolution authorizing Linden Board of Education to renew co-op pricing agreement with Ed Services Commission of New Jersey, formerly the Middlesex Regional Ed Services Commission. Forty-four is motion designated following as signatories for the Council of Civil Law from July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017. Forty-five is motion designated official newspapers. Forty-six is designated following depositories for money for Linden schools. Forty-seven is motion approve resolution authorizing professional service contract between the Linden Board of Ed and Linden Arresting Act as General and Labor Council and Council for Public Services and Special Projects. Forty-eight is to approve Schwartz, Simon, Edelson, and Selsso as a special council for facilities and construction. Item 49 is to authorize expenditure for all legal services in the amount not to exceed $350,000. Item 50, whereas the Linden Board has determined it requires an architecture record, we're appointing the Carol Urbino, Linden, New Jersey, as the quarter on the record for current architecture services in an amount not to exceed $100,000. Fifty-one is authorize superintendent visiting administrator to establish an interlocal shared services agreement with the Hillside Board of Ed for technology services. Fifty-two is to authorize superintendent visiting administrator, board secretary to implement the 2016-17 budget to local and state, which is pursuant to local and state policies. Fifty-three, approve the Linden Public School Purchasing Manual for 2016-17. Fifty-four, approve the Linden Public School Guide for Standard Operating Procedures and Internal Controls for 2016-17. Fifty-five is to approve enrollment of following students eligible on tuition basis under District Policy 5118 pending Home 56. Approve the following resolution that in accordance with NJAC 6A: Colon 23A-18.5, Board Ed does not require a little one Academy Spartit to charge students for reduced or paid meals for next year. The same thing is for the ARC, 57, the same thing is for the ARC Old School because to be provided within the annual tuition rate charged to students. Item 58 is advertisement for books and bids and state contracts during the school year. 59 is quotes as listed for elevator preventive maintenance, integrated pest management, maintenance and repair masters and secondary clocks. Item 60 is in accordance with 18:18A-42 approvals requested for the current materials contract with the same terms and conditions of the original contracts up to an increase of 2.63% CDI based on service forming in effect in efficient manner as follows. 61 is with following items of surplus equipment to be disposed of according to District Policy. Item 62 is to reject a bid for Skylight Replacement Related Works for bids received by May 19th on the fact that bidder does not have the qualifications required by its specs. 63 is approve contract with VMC Company Clifton for removal of asbestos powder in Madison School in the amount of $68,600 based on a little bid received in May 4th. And 64 is to approve use of one Linden Board Ed bus and driver to assist in transporting project graduation participants from JTG Center on Allen Street to the Woodbridge Community Center on Main Street, Woodbridge on Friday evening, June 24th. Facilities, there are seven items. Item 1 is to amend board actions on pay operation report. Items 2 and 7 are use of facilities at no charge by Andy Calley, Principal 74, and Dave McDonald, Director of City Linden Property, Department of Property, Public Property and Community Services. Item 64, use of facilities at the service charge as requested by M. Ken Dia, member Team 6096, and C. Obrecky, trustee Linden Panthers, AYF. And Braxton Recreation Project, Department of City Public Properties and Community Services. And item 5 is to approve use of lot of schools' polling places for primary election day, Tuesday, June 7th, and the general election, school board election on Tuesday, November 8th, 2016, Miss Madam President. If there are no questions or further discussions on these items, 1 through 64 Finance and 1 through 7 Facilities, we're moving respectlessly to the case.
Second.
Roll call. Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes.
Mr. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Colvin?
Yes.
Mr. Topples?
Yes.
Mrs. Valani?
Go ahead. I, yes, yes. Why yes?
Mr. Averas?
Yes.
Mrs. Suda?
I have a question. No on number 48, and I have to state on AM and MM on number 88.
Thank you, Madam President. The Planning and Policy Committee, a prime recommendation superintendent of schools presents that all emotions for education for our people. Share first three in 5132, the student dress code. Is there any discussion?
I have, move it in second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second that. But you're surprised.
I do think that it's a contraparties between those parents wanting the uniform and those not. I would like to see a few things actually added to the, for dress code. One would be that all shorts and skirts must have a finished hemmed edge, so that might prevent cutoffs and frayed edges, especially if anything else is going to be done. I'd like a clarification. I remember one where it says hold your tops, short shorts, hats, and headbands. Over discussing, over talking about headbands, that whole with hair bar, was that directed towards headbands, like a sports headband, like that's cotton terry cloth and been down it, that was part of that.
It's not what you said first.
So, headband, girl's wear headbands, hairball face would be allowed.
Correct. Correct. Let me just say this one.
We've already made that.
Should we just make it?
Well, we have made that stuff. Is that what they're?
Yeah, that, that's what the intention is, so maybe we call it sports headbands. So, listen, I just want to say, this is important now because we're going to pass this policy in first reading tonight. If there were these changes that the board would like to see a recommendation, you're going to tell me, but I want to know that you guys want these, okay? And then I'll ultimately put a bit and make the recommendation, so. Shorts, shirts, finished hem, finished hemmed edge.
A finished hemmed edge, so that would prevent like any type of frayed, framed, ragged, cut off. I don't know how this would be.
And we're going to make it sports headbands.
Sports headbands. While I don't have a problem with graphics and lighting on clothes in general, providing that it's appropriate, I do have an issue with any type of white graphic across the derriere. So I don't know how that would be properly worded, the little words across butts.
In my recollection of what usually has written across there, those are used typically on short shorts anyway, so.
Well, no, it's actually sweatpants.
Sweatpants, oh.
Yeah, that's pink.
Juicy.
Yes, juicy. See, you know.
I have a door. She was a teacher.
Can we make this a narrative statement? Nothing written on any, below the waist, but whatever.
Yeah, we'll come up with, we'll come up with some of that.
Yeah, I was going to say. I don't know how everybody else feels about tank tops or wide opening tank tops, so.
There's a, I look at, I know what you're talking about, I look at it because they tried to address that in the last policy, and then we started getting into measurements. You're talking about sleeveless shirts as.
Well, no, no, an actual, I have a problem with tank top. I mean, I do see girls' shirts that are sleeveless, and that's actually a thing even now with college shirt, yeah, so I don't have a problem so much with that, but tank tops, boys and girls, I personally.
Wasn't that not, wasn't that, I thought I read that it wasn't allowed, tank tops aren't allowed.
We revised that since our committee of the whole, there was a question over that. So, I mean, what we have is, to address that is in number two, but.
Yes.
So, I can't really spend this much time on this. How much, how much, so are we, should we designate inches?
No, I would just do a tank top because I think that's specific. You know what it's doing.
Are we saying no tank tops?
I'm saying no tank. That's my personal.
Okay, good, I like that. I like, I think it's, I think it makes it very easy on administrators to interpret.
It's a tank top. It's a tank top and no.
Right. Good.
So, I want to be clear with the board about what we've done, and I think that this balances, as Mrs. Valani stated earlier, the interests of those parents and those schools that still wish to maintain a uniform dress code. What it does is this policy keeps that intact. Our principals are going to be sending out with their letters that their schools have the dress code. However, what this policy does is it removes any threat of discipline for those students who are not in dress code and puts in some regulations for those students who are not in dress code that they must be guided by. Is that fair?
That's fair, so that if there are parents who want their children to dress in the uniform, this is what's being said, that the uniform dress is for this school, and if there are parents who are opposed to it, the children still have to follow a certain dress code appropriateness, but not the uniform. They don't have to wear the yellow polo shirts, they can wear jeans, they can wear appropriate dress codes.
So, I'm giving it to you, I think that this was the, I think that balances. I think it's fair compromise, so I'm going to recommend that, I'm going to recommend this policy as passed. We'll make these revisions, we'll still, we'll do a second revision.
Yeah, but we can, we can pass this, we can pass this now.
We can pass this now.
And then you make the modifications and we pass, that way our press source can get the information out to parents before the end of the school.
Okay. Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes.
Mr. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Colvin?
Yes.
Mr. Topples?
Yes.
Mrs. Valani?
Very much yes.
Mr. Averas?
Yes.
Mrs. Suda?
Yes.
Can we never talk about this again?
Yes.
We have to talk about them more time, more time. Well, we have to talk.
On our other committees, State Delegate. Oh, I'm sorry, there's no student judiciary in my class. Okay, State Delegate, Mr. Topples?
I'm going to look to see if I found it, but I didn't. Okay. No, I didn't. We had, we had the meeting weeks ago. Six resolutions were presented before the delegate assembly. Five of those resolutions passed. The major one had to do with part testing as the sole criteria for high school graduation, and the state school board says taking position that that is inadequate, that the policy that is existing right now is good enough, and that those other options for graduation should be available to students. There was some discussion about school districts mandating their own application of policies, but that was shot down. The discussion on that one policy took a good part an hour, and since you start at nine, and you have to get out by noon, and you have all these presentations, it was sticky. The one policy that was rejected was a policy that had to do with allowing school districts to exceed the 2% if the state mandated programs but didn't sufficiently fund, because the policy is that if the state mandated a program they're supposed to pay for, we know how that works, they don't. Inasmuch as the HIV policy, they came up with a million dollars, I think, for the entire state. Some districts spent $34,000 just on their own. The other one that came along was the part testing for the technology that you had to put in, and all they did with that was take your regular money that was dedicated to you and told you you got to spend this much on technology, so they didn't give you any additional funding. So although it technically was mandated, it was funded, it really wasn't, because your funds were cut in other places. That one was defeated because the majority of the delegates there felt it would be a cop-out for the state to not fund them and put the burden on the taxpayer, because if you had to fund them then, so they don't have to pay for it or they don't have to adequately pay for it, you have to make that up, so you're going to have to increase, it gives you a legitimate way to increase taxes on the taxpayer, so that one was defeated. One of the other policies that was passed was presented by Glassboro. Glassboro is a, they have the sending school, they're a receiving district for, what's, the sending kind of, what's, choice school district. And the way choice works is that if they have empty seats, they stay empty. What happened was the state put a cap on the amount of money that you could get, so that limited the amount of seats available in all these different choice districts. Typically, there was a selection process because the people require, the number of students trying to get into the district exceeded the open seats. However, in Glassboro, they have extra seats, they have empty seats, so they wanted to allow tuition students to come in because they didn't have enough choice students to fill those seats. Well, the rule was that either you're a choice district or you're a tuition district, you can't be both. This is a policy requesting the state to change that policy and allow tuition if you have empty seats. That, that's pretty much highlights most of what was done.
Thank you, Mr. Topples. There's no county delegate report, students have county.
We're done until September.
Oh, okay, okay, so there won't be one. Educational Services.
I was on English 10, Resonant.
I was on English 10 last month. Some children, I don't know if Mr. Alvarez is able to.
No, not yet.
The next meeting coming up, they're getting the jeans there, I know the real name, so.
Thank you. EST for parents. Parents, okay. Mrs. Birch.
I don't know which one we're doing first. Parents, okay, so we had our meeting. And we had some more parents come out and attend, some from the other parents. But again, it was a very busy night with other events going on. So we're hoping to see more come out. One of, some of the concerns that the parents brought up, they talked about uniforms being washed and cleaned. More sports uniforms when they're going back into the hands of kids. You know, once they come back in, they want them to be washed and cleaned properly before they're handed back out. We had a chairs and table concern, about our own chairs and tables. We also, some parents were asking about the fifth grade moving up ceremonies because some of the cafeterias are very small. So they wanted to know if those ceremonies could be moved into gymnasiums or maybe another location. Another concern was the grading system. Some of the parents still are having difficulty with the grading system and understanding the grading system. And they talked to us about that. And they were also looking for Spanish for pre-K and kindergarten. That was some of the things that they brought up. And they talked to us about. I believe our next meeting, did we say June?
We don't.
June 9th.
June 9th? Okay. June 9th, and we hope that we can get more parents to come out and talk with us and just chat and tell us what's going on in the district. Helps us out a lot. That concludes my report, my last minute.
Okay, Mrs. Birch, now I'm going to ask you to do EST for students.
At least I can kind of look back to that.
Very technological, ladies.
Yes. We met with the students. It was myself, Mrs. Houdak, and Mrs. Slater. And some of the concerns that they, we talked with a group of students. And they come with concerns and they come with things that they like that are going on in the district. So some of the concerns that they had this time, actually, we had eight, six girls and two boys this time. And some of the concerns where there was not enough food when they were being served their lunches, they weren't getting enough food. They said that they were getting four chicken nuggets like they got in elementary school. So they would like to see if we can look at the portion control on that. They also talked about the bathrooms and the funniness of the bathrooms. They discussed with us the crossing guards outside. When they were crossing from the vocational building to the high school, some of the crossing guards, if there's maybe only one or two students crossing, they're not getting out of their vehicles to cross our children safely. They're sitting in their vehicles, reading their newspapers, or they just completely ignore the child as they're crossing. So we discussed that with them and.
And that was addressed with the.
That was addressed with the traffic bureau. And we're hoping that the situation has been rectified. And we will find out at our next meeting. They talked about having the clubs and club bears again at eighth grade orientation. They are very, very concerned about students learning about what is going on in the buildings. They want the fifth graders to know what's going on in the middle school and they want the eighth graders to know what's going on in the high school. Because they felt when they came into the building, they didn't know all the clubs or activities that were available. And by the time they realized and they found out, it was too late. So they actually have been stressing this at almost every meeting. And that has been addressed also, so.
Mrs. Birch, isn't that, that perception changed too? They had a different perception of what, when they were in fifth grade of what middle school was going to be like until they got there. And in eighth grade and high school could be like until they got there and figured it out. You've got a lot to offer.
Exactly, exactly. And there is so much, and that's all they continue to say is there's so much. And they wish they could do more, but there's just not enough time. So they talked about that, they talked about. They asked for a lockdown night of studying before exams. It's called a lockdown. And what happens is, I believe another town does this, and that's where they got the idea from. They all go into the gymnasium and there's faculty there to help them study and they help each other study right before exams.
But they did suggest food. That they would be willing to pay for food.
Yes, they would be.
So they would not be starving.
Absolutely.
And what I told Mrs. Birch is that I love the idea, if we even have final exams this year, because we're discussing the need for them.
And then they, then they gave me some of the things that they really liked that were going on in the schools. They were very excited about the boys volleyball team that has just finished up their season. They are very excited about some of the classrooms that just got repainted. They said they look brand spanking new and it's nice to be in a nice, clean environment. They also, let's see. Oh, they were very excited about Relay for Life too. We did our first annual Relay for Life and they were excited about that. So with some of the back, we get the goods. And that concludes my report. We will have our next, I'm sorry, we will have our next meeting June 9th at 1:00.
Thank you, Mrs. Birch. There is no EST for special ed. Unfinished business. Board member comments and new business.
I have no business.
New business. We have a couple of businesses.
Business, business, law. I'd like to introduce tonight a resolution of the Linden Board of Education Graduation Requirement Regulations. Whereas, New Jersey is transitioning to a new assessment system with new state tests known as the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Career, otherwise known as PARC. And whereas, the New Jersey Department of Education, NJDOE, has replaced the High School Proficiency Assessment, ESPA, which had a passing grade rates of 80 to 9% with PARC assessments that fewer than half of all New Jersey high school seniors have passed. And whereas, the NJDOE failed to adequately inform students and parents about the potential consequences for graduation when the PARC assessments were given in spring 2015. And whereas, beginning with the class of 2016, the NJDOE has proposed new high school graduation requirements that rely heavily on PARC before the validity and reliability of those assessments have been established. Whereas, only 17 states continue to tie standardized high school exit exam, test that diplomas down from 25 states in 2012. New Jersey is one of only two states in the nation using New Jersey PARC assessments, the new PARC assessments this year, as a graduation exit test. And whereas, the research on high school exit testing shows that their use increases dropout and incarceration rates without improving college participation rates or economic prospects of graduates. Whereas, the NJDOE has eliminated the alternative high school assessment previously used to satisfy state standards by thousands of students unable to pass the ESPA, including many of the state's English language learners, ELL graduates. And whereas, over 50,000 seniors in the class of 2016 who did not pass the PARC assessments must now access the New Jersey DOE's other options in order to graduate this June, requiring districts to devote valuable staff, time, and resources to help students meet new requirements through even more tests and time-consuming new graduation appeals process. And whereas, some of the options authorized by the NJDOE for the class of 2016 seniors who did not pass the PARC assessment include the Scholastic Aptitude Test, SAT, and the American College Test, the ACT, which test requires fees, thereby denying equal access to public school students throughout New Jersey. Whereas, some of these options, such as the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery and AccuPlacer, are not aligned with state curriculum standards. And whereas, all of the New Jersey DOE's designated substitute assessments are English-only tests that do not provide appropriate accommodations for ELL students. Whereas, the New Jersey DOE and the State Board of Education have not yet legally adopted the regulations required to implement and propose new graduation policies. And none of the additional options proposed by the NJDOE as alternative ways to satisfy the new graduation requirements are authorized by the current assessment regulations. So these new policies cannot fairly or legally be imposed on current seniors who are entitled to graduate under the rules that have been in place throughout their high school careers and that remain in effect today. Whereas, legal issues arising from the NJDOE's graduation proposals have led to a court challenge by parents represented by Education Law Center and the American Civil Liberties Union of New Jersey. And these issues could expose district boards of education to legal challenges by Students United diplomas on the basis of improperly imposed new graduation rules. And whereas, these policies have neither firm legal footing nor the public understanding, support, and awareness needed for such a dramatic shift in high school graduation standards. And whereas, beginning with the class of 2021, the NJDOE has proposed requiring students to pass the PARC ELA 10 and Algebra I assessments in order to graduate. Despite the fact that the current passing rates of those tests are 37% and 36% respectively. Whereas, beginning with the class of 2020, the NJDOE has further proposed additional regulations that would deny parents the right to opt their children out of PARC assessments, making it impossible for students who opted out of the PARC assessments to graduate high school. And whereas, the department is proposing to eliminate all other testing options besides PARC as ways to satisfy state graduation requirements. And whereas, the New Jersey High School Graduation Act, otherwise known as THE Act, requires an 11th grade test in math and ELA with retesting opportunities for seniors in 12th grade. And the PARC and the course exams do not conform with requirements of THE Act. Whereas, New Jersey has had four graduation tests since the act was passed in 1979 and has never attached diploma stakes to a new test after a single administration. And whereas, the governor's own College and Career Ready Task Force recommended a multi-year transition to a new state assessment system during the Department of Education will not establish a minimum passing score as a graduation requirement, recommending instead that graduation will be dependent on satisfactory completion of the required courses as established by local boards of education. And whereas, the new graduation requirements proposed by the NJDOE do not conform to the recommendations of Governor's College and Career Ready Task Force. Now therefore be it resolved that the Linden Board of Education hereby urges the New Jersey DOE to withdraw its pending graduation requirement proposals from consideration before the State Board of Education and urges the NJDOE to implement the recommendations of the Governor's College and Career Ready Task Force, including a multi-year transition to a new assessment system that does not establish a minimum passing score as a graduation requirement on the new PARC assessments, and urges the legislature and the State Board of Ed to take the necessary steps to implement this recommendation and allow students to graduate during this multi-year transition period on the basis of credits earned, grade point averages, and successful completion of all attendance, service, and other local graduation requirements. And urges that this multi-year transition to a new assessment system be used to conduct a broad public dialogue among all stakeholders to develop a new consensus around the transparent, equitable assessment policies all our students deserve. And urges that New Jersey continues to provide multiple pathways to a high school diploma that include alternatives not based on standardized tests. And that it continues to respect the right of parents to make decisions about the assessment alternatives that are most appropriate for their children. And urges that the legislature review or hold hearings on the impact of the department's proposed graduation rules on the class of 2016. And be it further resolved if this resolution be certified and submitted to our Governor Chris Christie, Commissioner David Hespe, state representatives, Senate Education Committee, the New Jersey School Boards Association, local municipal leaders, the New Jersey Education Association, and the Local Linden Education Association. Does anybody have any questions?
Second, first of all.
I didn't motion it yet. I hereby move the resolution.
I'll second it.
Does anybody have any questions?
I, I, most of the ones that were said at the meeting. I would just like to make one comment. That particular resolution was distributed at the delegate assembly after we passed our objections to the part being the sole test. It was sponsored, but it was brought forward by Howard Park. And it, it's a mouthful, but it makes a lot of great points. So it's, it's more than just saying you object to a test because you object to a test. It spells out why this is not the way to go. The way, at the, at the method, at the speed that they're moving. I mean, it's very much like when they decided to change our evaluation system for, for teachers and they were going to pilot them. And before the pilot was done, every school was required to adopt one. They didn't study the pilots, they didn't finish anything, they just adopted it. It's the same deal. The state gets, somebody in the state gets this bug up their bum. And they come out with these stupid rules. So I mean, I'm wholeheartedly for this and I can't see anyone who wouldn't be. And these New Jersey school boards recommend always that if a local school board has something to say to their legislators that they do resolutions like this and board them. Because the more they get, the more they react.
I'd like to say we are now the 15th local district to pass a similar resolution.
Not yet, but it will.
But we may.
We will be.
We might be the 15th.
If we do.
And aren't we the first immune county?
And we are the first, we will possibly be the first immune county. Roll call.
Mrs. Beviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Slater?
Yes.
Calibis?
Yes.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani? Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Houdak?
Yes.
Happy birthday, Kate.
Can we still come for cake?
Yep.
This evening, we heard presentations from two brokers. And we need to hire a broker for this school year. So I am asking the pleasure of the board, since you heard me too.
I would like to move that we maintain Brown Brown as our broker's record. They've done a lot of work for us over the last few years. They've managed to keep our, the increase in our rate at Bureau. Plus, they provide savings on student insurance.
Do I hear a second? Okay, then we'll take a roll call for Brown Brown.
Mrs. Beviana?
No.
Mrs. Birch?
No.
Mrs. Slater?
No.
Mr. Calibis?
No.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
No.
Mr. Alvarez?
No.
Mrs. Houdak?
No.
I need a motion for, I appreciate.
Second, made that motion, second.
I'd like to make a comment before we vote on this particular thing. I find it amazing that this board would be willing to spend more money for the same services by hiring a different group. It totally boggles my mind. Everybody talks about saving funds and doing what's best for the students. And somehow, you get a group that comes in that isn't going to do any more for you than the group that you already have. Nobody asked the board, the business administrator who works with these people directly, what she would like. Nobody bothered these things. If anybody knows what the hell's in these things, I'd let them know. Because there's nothing in here that's going to tell you what anybody's going to do.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Tapaleski. Roll call.
Mrs. Beviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Calibis?
Yes.
Mr. Tapaleski?
No.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Houdak?
Yes.
Are there any other, other board member comments?
Yeah, I have comments. Not about this. I went to the, we went to the RLTC Change Command Ceremony. It was a marvelous ceremony, it was really great, a lot of awards given out, a lot of scholarships, and it's great to see the kids at that ceremony. We were supposed to have our student EST meeting the following day, and Commander tried, did something different for a change. And I knew, once he announced that, I knew our EST meeting was getting canceled. Where they had the change, a lot of times, because it's a dinner, some kids aren't able to attend. So he had to change command ceremony in front of the entire regiment, which I thought was outstanding for him to do. And I know coming up, we have the EMAP program.
Oh, yes, and also I need a definite answer from all of you who's attending, so I can, you can go.
I already know it's DPK.
I know you did, you and Ron both did, I did too. Okay, so, Mrs. Bellani, do you think you're still? Okay. What's the, is that against the tuning? At 6 o'clock at?
Yeah.
So everybody's good, okay, then I will call Mr. Marison and let him know.
He'll take care of that.
I sure will, because he'll call me before I get to him, so it's okay. Also, I also would like to let everybody know that I participated in Relay for Life at school number 10 and school number 5. And I would like to thank Shopper and Clark for sponsoring Relay for Life. They provided snacks for both schools, scrunchie the bear was there. And Mr. Romero, Dominic Romero, who is the store manager, is an awesome gentleman. They were great with the kids, everybody got medals. And it was a great event for all the kids, Penford and awesome boss.
Mrs. Hudak, I may speak in Shopper, I got a call from the district manager, the store manager of the Shopper at Linden today, and they want to donate a thousand dollars, they want, they're going to send me a letter to be board approved, they want to donate a thousand dollars to a student in need who's attending college starting this year and for every year in perpetuity.
I just want to commend Ms. Peaton at Linden High School today. They had Domestic Violence Day, and she had an array of activities that I thought was a great idea because we don't realize how much domestic violence goes on with our teens. They had a lady come out from the National Association of Domestic Violence and do a great presentation. Kids did spoken words, people spoke about it because even if it's a teen relationship, they talk about like teens who have watched domestic violence with their parents. So I'm a big domestic violence supporter with the awareness of it. So I went to the high school today to just see some of the things they did, and it was a real positive thing. And I just want to commend her for stepping up to chair such a great event today.
Thank you.
Well, yes, earlier this month, Mrs. Beviano and myself attended a training from the New Jersey School Boards at Union County College on the pressure of perfection and the pressure that comes externally from society and from parents that are put on kids in high school today. And a lot of that has to do with standardized testing, getting into colleges. And there were a lot of takeaways from this, but one thing, a couple of things stood out. One was that colleges are actually now starting to push back, not wanting to have a phone book full of extracurricular activities and ACTs. They're looking for students who are well-rounded, but they're not looking for more than, say, three extracurricular activities, things that are more personal to them. And they're also taking into consideration students who can't be involved in extracurricular activities because they have to work to support their families. Another thing that they were touching upon unfortunately is, it was on teen suicide and the stress that, that kids put on themselves that lead them to that. And one of the things that we did, an exercise, looking at different leadership styles, and what we looked for, what we think that we would have benefited from as a student. So maybe try and be that student, be that leader for somebody else, be the leader that you needed when you were young. It was very informative, and it was very nice that New Jersey School Boards are doing this around the state so that it's available training for us so we can continue to help our kids.
And I have one more thing. We have a meeting scheduled for Thursday, August the 25th, for the committee of the whole. And I was wondering if it's okay if you could switch it from Thursday, August the 25th to Wednesday, August the 24th, because the boss will be around. Would I prepare? And they all know the bosses.
Can I make a suggestion, and of course, it's up to, to the board. August is typically, actually, I was going to say a light month. It's busy only if I don't get everybody hired that I need to be hired, and I'm in pretty good shape. The 24th is absolutely okay with me, but if you wanted, we have our board meeting on the 30th. We could maybe double up that night if people are away on vacation, it's a busy time of year. Maybe just for that August meeting, we could double up, do a work session, and then a, and a board meeting on the 30th.
Is it okay for the 30th?
Oh, the 30th? No.
Yes.
The 24th.
Or you can do it on the 24th, you can do the whole meeting on the, on the 24th. Actually, that would be better, do the whole thing on the 24th.
On Wednesday, the 24th.
Yeah, I'll have everything that I need done.
I'm just, just for any, any less than hires, I mean, you need to do it on the 30th, so.
I'll be good for the 24th, as far as hiring is concerned.
I just want to take 30 seconds elsewhere. So I'm finishing up, I guess my fifth month as a board member. And I just want to reach out and say thank you to the administration. Well, we grant things, darn great, you have provided you great education, sometimes, you know, through debate, sometimes just through hours and hours of going line by line through the budget or just being there to answer a question. And it's a lot more complicated of a job than I, even though I thought it was, it was, it's even more so. And the job that you guys do, I have to say, is outstanding. And some of the changes that are coming up this year, I don't know what's public, what's not, I'm impressed, I'm excited, and I can't wait to see the action. So thank you, and thank our fellow board members for always, you know, being there, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Bellani.
I said, for tea.
All of you did an awesome job.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate that. Listen, the board, this board has always supported anything that we do. And that shit's good for kids, right? That I appreciate.
Anybody?
Can we go back to the 24th, did we confirm that? We're doubling up on the 24th.
Starting at 6:00.
Starting at 6:00.
Starting, I said, work session, drink a drink. That's perfect. As long as it's good for.
I'm going Tuesday, so I'm good. Anybody else have any other? Any other further questions? None, there's promotion, Trucha.
So moved.
Is that good?